Yeah.
It's just we're adding that to codifying it into the whole decision. And any, any council member can ask to reorder items.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
Cool.
I hate, I'm very tolerant to other people being late, but I hate being late myself. All right, Gardner City Council will come to order and invite everybody to some attendance to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening, we've got a proclamation. This is Kansas Business Appreciation Month. Jason famous, don't hide back there. Come join me and everybody look at Jason, don't look at me. He's much more stylish. Look at those socks he's got. And Ja-
You got shoes for the people at home, Jason.
Jason, Jason is our, our-
Thanks.
Our president of the Gardner Edgerton Chamber of Commerce and, and we're glad to have him and he's been with us since December and great things are happening with the Chamber of Commerce and he's here representing the business community and I see some of the, some of you others in the, in the audience and thanks for coming. But the proclamation reads, whereas the city of Gardner recognizes the important contributions of local businesses to the economic strength and overall character of the city and whereas the residents of the city of Gardner benefit daily from the displays of charity and outpouring of support for community projects from local businesses and their members and whereas the city of Gardner is committed to continuing development of a supportive business climate which encourages local investment, job growth, and community involvement and whereas the city council recognizes and appreciates the dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed by local businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chris Morrow, Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, could hereby proclaim the month June 2015 as Kansas Business Appreciation Month. We'll go ahead and give this to you.
Very nice.
And we appreciate your efforts in whether it's business attraction or even more importantly on the chamber side, business retention and expansion. Would you like to tell us something about it?
No, things are good. I'm, I've been here six months as the mayor said and I think things with the chamber are moving along and we're moving in the right direction and you know, I'm always excited to hear about new businesses coming to town or looking to open up shop and it seems like on a daily basis I'm answering comments or questions or inquiries and that's a good thing.
And you don't mind that, so what Jason's saying is call me.
Yep, call me if you need anything.
All right.
Yep.
Well, thank you and thanks to the, the local businesses in Gardner.
Thank you very much.
All right. We've got a second and third presentation item. The second presentation is in regards to 2016 budget initiatives. Cheryl Harrison, welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. Here tonight to talk with you about the 2016 budget initiatives. The theme of this year's budget is growth by choice or by chance. We are currently in the third year of our budget, developed using priority-based budgeting, which is a leading practice for local government. You all know it's a multi-year process and it is basically developed at being results-oriented. Serves as the framework for better-informed financial and budgeting decisions. And the purpose of priority-based budgeting is to help ensure that a community identifies and protects the values and services that are most important. This year, the focus was on step one, stakeholder input. We heard our citizens say that they wanted to be more involved, so for the first time we moved citizen input to the very front of the budget process. Staff held a citizens' budget forum in January and a capital improvements program citizen workshop was held in February. Likewise, the governing body input was moved to the front of the process and we had proactive input in March from the governing body as opposed to waiting to reacting to recommendations at the end of the process. As shown in step eight, adjust as necessary, priority-based budgeting involves monitoring and evaluating the accountability and results for funding allocated to support the governing body's strategic goals and makes adjustments as needed. So if we don't meet our goals, we must ask ourselves, why not? Has the environment changed? Do we have new inquiries or pressure? Do we need to adjust our assumptions, our tactics, or our initiatives? So two key things of note about priority-based budgeting. Number one, stakeholder input, and number eight, continuing process improvement. One of the governing body's most important policy guidance functions is providing a vision for the city. Strategic goals guide the governing's body vision for the city and filters the decisions for the projects and initiatives that are funded in the budget. Initiatives are short-term actions or projects developed by staff to support those strategic goals. They are the mechanisms that are used to fund through the allocation of resources during the budget adoption process. So let's review for everyone's benefit the strategic goals adopted by the governing body. Promote economic development, improve quality of life, enhance fiscal stewardship, maintain our infrastructure, and asset management. And then we'll review the initiatives which are the short-term funded actions that were developed and evaluate them for results. So under the first goal, promote economic development. Encouraging development, encouraging people to work, shop, and play in the city of Gardner. Leaving their money here, helping diversify our tax base, and getting others to pay for our needs. The first year of the priority-based budgeting, we focused on visioning and planning initiatives to ensure we had identified our destination. We developed our comprehensive plan and an economic development strategy plan were both completed and approved in 2014. Together those plans will help staff and the governing body create an environment that enhances business attraction. Building on the 2014 initiatives, the 2015 budget was a roadmap for building a community and we incorporated those initiatives and focused on maintaining or improving the city's existing infrastructure and assets while continuing to plan for growth. So let's review at the halfway mark, the 2015 budget initiatives and let's just see where we are. The red checkmark means those items have been completed. First item, the land development code update in progress. Godeving has been approved, they were approved on February 2nd. This effort will complement the 2014 comprehensive plan. While we have a vision through the comprehensive plan, a vision without an implementation tool is a wasted vision and the comprehensive plan is best realized through the development of the land development code. It is through that development code that we streamline our permitting process and position the city for additional economic development. You've heard us talk about how the development community relies on certainty. You've heard our experts at the Economic Development Symposium confirm the same, that development community relies and requires certainty. So the land development code update will help us to ensure that when developers come throughout the community, they can be certain of what the expectations are. We've continued to partner with the Southwest Johnson County Economic Development Corporation and we funded that effort this year as well. The incentive strategy for economic development was completed and approved April 20th. Practical guide for incentives positions the city for new non-residential growth and provides a guideline for incentives based on the benefits of a particular development. Improve quality of life. Downtown sidewalks. We've received notifications that we'll be getting a grant, award for the Community Development Block grant although we haven't received the funding yet. Once we receive the funding from C2BG with our city share, we will be installing ADA compliant ramps on our downtown sidewalks. Once that grant money is received, we will bid the project and we anticipate having it completed this fall. Fiscal stewardship, business plans. As we continue to transform to a high-performance organization, business plans are a critical component. We all know that successful businesses have business plans and government likewise must have a business plan. While we're not a business, we are in the business of providing efficient, effective services to our residents and businesses. What gets measured, gets done. We established metrics this year. They were in the 2015 budget for the first time that we presented to you that was adopted. Next year, departments will establish visions based on implementing goals and policies as identified in the utility assessments, pavement assessments, and other planning documents. Analysis of the utility systems. We evaluated our water, wastewater, and electric systems and they promote fiscal responsibility through appropriate planning. We are preparing for the next wave of growth. We know it's coming. We're deliberately working on economic development efforts to ensure that we have growth. We've developed a plan to strategically and responsibly invest in utility assets. The identified needs from those utility assessments are included in the 2016 utility budget as previously stated in other council meetings. Increase infrastructure and asset management. Law enforcement facility need study presented to you March 2nd. Aquatic Center rehab completed and welcomed by a long line on Memorial Day. Downtown water storage facility fence, we anticipate bidding that project the end of June. The senior building rehabilitation project. We held a public information meeting in April. You, on the 18th of May, approved that application and we have $50,000 in the budget for our share of the grant, application. If we don't receive the grant, we'll go as far as we can with the $50,000 that you've approved and we have allocated unless we are directed to do otherwise. Microsoft licensing compliance. The estimate for this project has been reduced from $100,000 to $30,000 and it'll be completed in the third quarter. We're waiting until after we install the fiber and our network is rehabbed. Voice payment system, approved March 16th, in progress as well. We are laying out the call center structure and we're scheduled to go live this fall. Organizational restructuring. We have completed this, the mayor's reference. We have our new utility director with us here today. June 8th, we expect to have the Business and Economic Development Director joining us. Those departments have been restructured for cohesion, efficiency, and focus in their respective areas and I'm proud to say we've received delivery of the police SUVs. As part of the cycle of continuous process improvement for the 2016 budget initiatives, this is the new budget, the theme of this budget again is growth by choice or by chance because the focus is going to be to further economic opportunities through infrastructure development and asset management. The 2016 budget initiatives that I'm going to present to you tonight were prepared to implement the activities of the previous years including the utility system and the pavement assessments. We continue to partner with the Southwest Johnson County EDC. They requested funding through their earlier presentation to you of $55,000. The chamber has requested funding of $20,000. Tonight we're requesting funding under economic development of $120,000 for an infrastructure analysis. Why? There are two components of capital planning. There is a five-year look which is a capital improvements program. You've heard us talk about that quite a bit. There is a twenty-year look which is a capital improvement element. The CIE or Capital Improvement Element is the bridge from the existing current state of affairs documented in the utility assessments to achieving the vision identified in the comprehensive plan. That bridge or that plan is how we get from here to the future and it implements the governing body's plan or goals to secure the interchanges and the city's continued economic viability. Improve quality of life and fiscal stewardship. Two goals, these items will cover both. The 2016 budget initiatives are focused economic development, infrastructure, asset management. If we make fiscally responsible, planned, targeted, timely improvement for our infrastructure, we will achieve fiscal stewardship and maintain our quality of life. Public Works Park Facility Need Study. While it's $20,000 and yes, it's under the city administrator's threshold, the city authority, the question is, are we committed to this project before we spend the money to do another need study? In the CIP, we have a placeholder for a little over $6 million, which could very easily double following the study, much like we saw with the law enforcement study. So tonight, looking for your input on whether or not a public works park facility is something that the governing body would like to see. Assalt storage, $75,000. The lease for our current barn is up. We are required by NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, to have a covered salt barn. This is our first permit cycle, so we were given a few years to move to compliance. Needs to be by 2017 when we will be in the third year of our permit cycle. Whether we build a structure or continue to rent a covered off-site facility, the existing open storage of our salt cannot continue. It must go away immediately, preferably by 2017 so we're in compliance within the timeframe that we're required to be in compliance, which is the third year of the five-year permit. So this $75,000 is an estimate to have a storage facility that will house between 1,000 and 2,000 tons, which is more than double the capacity that we currently have, which is only 700 tons. If we do not have an onsite storage facility, a covered storage facility, our snow removal operations are going to be adversely impacted. If we build one, we're going to be able to stop paying the $6,300 a year that we're currently paying to rent an off-site storage facility. Senior building rehab, talked about that under the 2015 initiatives. This is that project, making sure that we complete that project 2016 with the grant funding. Phase two merit and career ladders. Phase one was to implement merit increases. Phase two is expanded to include promotional opportunities or career ladders. Last year you allocated $230,000 and we were able to implement the first phase of the salary study. This year we're asking for $20,000 more to implement the governing body's directive to provide career ladders or promotional opportunities for our employees. Golf course property master plan, $100,000. The golf course contract ends in 2018 and it's going to be a big deal. So we need to get started. It's a city asset, it's prime land, we need to create a vision for this asset. There are many questions that we need to answer. Is your vision for eighteen holes? Is it for second-tier housing? Is it for nine holes? Do we have a golf course at all? Do we issue a request for proposals for a development plan to work on a public-private partnership with a developer? Or many other ideas that perhaps we haven't even thought of. It's going to be a big deal when this contract ends. We will need to get started soon because we have a very short window to answer a lot of questions about prime land in the city of partner. More to come, to be determined at a later date answers to those questions. Staff is working on a plan to remove the house on the golf course property. Our vehicle replacement plan request was for four police vehicles and a dump truck. Governing body suggestions, as we made presentations and secured your input at the beginning of the process, to have a staff person to work on managing our capital improvements program, to also have a person who would look at managing our land development code or zoning code so that we would maintain that update on a continuous basis. The staff recommendation is that we reevaluate these positions in the 2017 budget process given that we have new directors. So it's time to get your consensus for initiatives that are included in the 2016 budget. The items that are presented from staff are listed here. Two things of note before you begin to consider the 2016 initiatives. First thing is that the three-year street rehab project is not budgeted. We can't afford it in 2016 without the new sales tax. The second thing of note, trails and bridges are budgeted and funded in the general fund. You can leave them there or if the sales tax passes, you have the option to use sales tax money for those projects and free up your general fund for other uses. One more item before you deliberate. We have some pending items. A CIP program was presented to the governing body last year. It was presented to the citizens in February. The utility CIP and assessments, those items were included in the utility budget as presented in February. However, before staff can complete the CIP, we need your input on a few remaining items that are tax-supported debt projects. Westside Park, Law Enforcement Center, City Hall Roof Replacement, and the Public Works Park Facility. So where do we go from here and what are our next steps after we get your input? Following your direction tonight, staff will finish developing the budget and the CIP and present them to you on July 6th. Mr. Mayor, that completes the review of the 2016 initiatives.
Okay. Questions? Yeah, this was listed as present.
Presentation, yes.
I personally, it's, it's, I would, I would have no problem with public comment.
I think I welcome it on the money.
Sure.
Public comments, if you've got public comments regarding this issue, come forward, state your name and address for the record and be fair.
Hello, my name's Debbie Hickman, 848 South Sumac here in Gardner. When I read through the published information concerning Cheryl's presentation tonight, I was pretty upset with myself for not paying closer attention to our police department. Shame on me, shame on our citizens, shame on the governing body for years. Have you all seen this report? Everything that is yellow means that these things need immediate consideration and these are our vehicles, folks. These are our vehicles. Thirty is a point value associated with a condition four means needs immediate consideration. Our officers are patrolling in cars that are rated a forty-five, a forty-six, a thirty-three. That's, and that's kind of a good one. I wouldn't mind driving that one if I was one of the officers. We have two new vehicles that'll be put into effect. It shows we're asking for four. We need to cough up some more money. We need to get these police officers some vehicles. When I call 911, if I ever have to do that, I number one want to make sure that they have a car that's going to make it. Number two, the car that can get through the snow. Shame on us for letting us get to where it looks like 99% of our vehicles are worthless. I believe we have a chief of police who, given the proper utili, the vehicles, can put together a rotation system to where maybe we can save a little bit. Let's give him something to work with. Four vehicles to me is not enough. I think we need to consider at least six vehicles. Let, let him cover patrol cars, at least patrol cars and maybe a sergeant on duty. I'm kind of embarrassed that we're sending our chief out in a 2006 Ford. I'm kind of embarrassed that he goes to other cities and that's what he's driving. I would say he might probably drive my own vehicle. So I'm asking that we take a long, hard look and figure out where we can come up with money. If we're talking about economic development, we've got to build our base and our base right now is going to be the police department and the fire department. I'm, I'm really upset that I haven't personally taken a better look at this. Sometime back I've not been through the Citizens Academy. I understand that they're aware of some of this, but I ask that we really take a long, hard look at what we're budgeting please for vehicles. I would love to see six rather than four. Give him some more to work with please. Another thing is, police station, justice center, whatever you want to call it, that needs to be a priority, that needs to be a consideration. And I ask that hopefully you all will take a look at that. I know we have some people who ran on that. I know Todd has made some comments about having looked at the budget and looked at what's going on and he and his assessment felt that it's something that we could handle if we, we worked it out. Let's work it out, folks. Let's take care of the police department. I think they've been the redheaded stepchild, so to speak, in the city and gosh, I don't want to see that anymore. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else? No one else is coming forward? Questions, comments directed toward the city administrator, finance director, staff members?
I have several, can we just?
Go right ahead.
On these cars, I agree with Debbie wholeheartedly. I mean, I've been in those cars and trust me, we need six cars.
Backseat or the front?
Actually, the front. Barely fit in them too. And I can tell you they need SUVs because I don't fit in that car without a gun belt. So I don't know how those guys do it. I, I figured it out, it was $30,550 is what that $120,000 figures out for four vehicles, the numbers that you used. I was wondering how we came across that number because last year's budget, we had $40,000 per its vehicle and I, I don't know that we're going to get four vehicles with $120,000, so I know we're not going to get six. So I'm- So I'm wondering how we came, I mean, I don't think there's been a big price drop in vehicles, especially when we're, instead SUVs too, so versus standard cars. That's the first question.
Chief, you want to speak to me?
I think that figure's going to be about $6,000 short. And right now we're looking at probably sixty-seven, sixty-eight for the two because we got more than what we expected on one of our trade-ins. We actually were surprised we got it. We put a blanket over it and shipped it out when we got it. I think that figure's going to be a little bit short from where we are right now.
Okay, so we do need to put in some more money for you for that, okay? Because that, to me, that seemed awfully low for four vehicles. So salt storage, $75,000 to build a building, is that correct?
Probably.
Yeah, it's not a salt dome. It's more of the ones that you've probably seen some storage areas that have kind of the big concrete blocks around the base and the fabric pull over top.
Okay.
We could get that for in the $75,000 range and that's also portable. I mean, if we do move a facility based on the study, we can decommission that and reuse a lot of it.
That was my next question. And also on that, where would this go? I mean, currently, because I'm thinking over here is probably not the best.
No, actually at the Public Works Barn, we do have a space for it.
Okay. And where is the facility we have right now that we're paying $6,500 a year for rent? Is that?
It's actually on the north end of town. It's a private barn that we have a lease agreement with. The challenge with that is we've run that for probably nine or 10 years. We're in the $70,000 range now. We do have a requirement for the contract that we rebuild it for any damages that we've caused and salt is extremely corrosive.
Sure.
So we'd like to get out of there soon.
I understand. And then the golf course master plan, I mean, what, I guess right now, that's owned by the state or leased to the individuals who?
Yes, it is leased.
And is that leased, I mean, how much money is that? I mean, because is that going right into general fund right now? Is that?
Sure.
About your lease.
Yes, to give you some brief history on that, it was originally signed into an agreement in 1988. It was a long-term agreement which took the golf course, the operator took it from a nine-hole sand green course to an 18-hole grass green course. That's why they gave him such a long term on it. Currently, the agreement has the operator providing the city with 2% return on the green fees. So it's not a lot of money.
Right. That's a smoking deal. So what are we looking at? So this $100,000 is going to help us get some numbers together so we can actually try to make money on that property?
Well, I think before we determine that we want to move forward with the golf course, we really need to have some discussion with the governing body, some policy issues worked out. In communities like Florida where you can golf all year round, they have golf courses that are closing. And so they're not revenue generators. So I think we need to ask, is it really something we want to maintain? Because we don't have the ability to golf like they can golf there. Do we, if we maintain it, then do we use a portion of it for housing or some other activity and maybe go to nine holes? We need to have some policy discussion with the governing body before we actually commission that work and get to some answers of what the options are and then study it and come up with a plan and figure out what we're going to do with that land.
So I guess the $100,000, that's just a generic number thrown in to for?
It's a placeholder. That is great. It's a placeholder because based on what you tell us that you'd like to do, it could be substantially less or more, depends on the direction we get.
And I don't think we're necessarily prepared to have that discussion right now.
No, we're not.
One of those things where we'll probably have a work session or two to discuss. And to be honest, I think we might have to have some input from the folks at the lake since it's right across the street and get some sense from the community as to what their vision is for that property as well.
Correct, this is a city asset. I think you want to have some input from the governing body and from the residents. And I think we want to get some expertise from people who are in the business of running golf courses. We are trying to gather in preparation for this, some information from some other cities in Johnson County that have golf courses, you know, what does their revenue look like? You know, how they're operating so that when we have a work session with you, we have some basic information to provide to you for discussion.
I think we sell it, build the justice center with the money. Problem solved. I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, Rich, you took a lot of my thunder. I just, on the vehicles, I don't have that sheet that Debbie had. What's our total number and how many?
Twenty vehicles.
Forty total on the plate, roughly?
Total vehicles?
Yeah.
I believe we have thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, so that's?
And six of them are control vehicles. The average mileage is 122,000. We put on between 50 and 70,000 miles on the vehicle in a single year. So you're talking about, even if I rotate them through administrative assignments where the mileage would average much less than that, you're talking about a two, three-year life cycle. The vehicles we're replacing now are the ones we bought at the end of 2012. And one of them has 158,000 miles on it.
That's a lot.
It's insane.
So would six cover?
A rotation.
The rotation and the worst, I guess that would be half. But two of those are already new, right? Two of those are the SUVs.
Haven't gotten them yet. We haven't put them in the fleet yet.
So then it would be eleven that are bad.
If we get six, then, I mean, in reality, every year we would have to add a couple of vehicles to rotate them through and that's at a minimum because again, talking about a two or three-year life cycle before we get to like we did in 2013 where we spent $50,000 on a vehicle repair. So it doesn't make sense to spend that much money. Actually, one of the vehicles that we took out of service had been sitting for seven months because we had spent $11,000 on one vehicle during a calendar year and that was one of the 2014's. And the vehicle that's got 158,000 is actually one of our favorite vehicles because of the way it runs. I mean, there's vehicles that have 112 that sit because along with 158,000's runs that.
Real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, what I would like to see is, I see that we've got four SUVs in there, but you know, we'll see what kind of consensus we get the rest of the way around the desk, but I have a feeling that it's going to be, tell us what you need to get us back on the right track. And my guess is that it's not going to be four and we should probably be prepared for a larger number than what's already been discussed. But I think that's probably going to be a priority, but let's get to that. I wanted to make sure that, does everybody else kind of feel the same way that I do on that?
Oh, certainly.
Yes.
Do we need more vehicles?
Yeah.
It's been neglected for a long time.
Just tell us, we'll bring it back in the budget.
And one of the issues is, in like the sheet that Debbie pointed out, you see that they're all yellow. Well, that's not necessarily only violent. I mean, some of the vehicles, like my vehicle, the one I drive, only has fifty-some odd thousand miles on it, but it's ten years old. So, you know, it is also a high maintenance vehicle because, you know, just because of the age. You know, the first day I got in it, the transmission was slipping and they gave it to me because they, that was the best car we had to give to me. They had it set up when I got there. But, you know, all the vehicles, even, you know, the animal control vehicle and all those, even though they're under 100,000 miles because of the age, you know, they are high maintenance vehicles and vehicles we just only have to bond with.
Did you hear anything else?
Just, you know, on the $100,000 master plan, I think you're kind of going the way I was. It seems like kind of a high number to start off with, but.
And you could be right.
Okay, but I agree that we definitely, that's going to be a priority in the future. And I also like the idea that the salt storage is portable, you know, we can invest in it and then wherever we decide to do the public works, it can come with us. That's for now.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on what the previous two council members said, but I also want to mention, without a vehicle maintenance plan, without a fleet maintenance plan, I think that if we, if this continues the way it goes, we're going to be having the same discussion two years from now, okay? We've got to get a handle on our fleet. And I'm talking about from the standpoint of maintenance records, regular servicing, just like with streaks and just like with sidewalks and just like with, you know, aquatic centers. If you neglect regular fleet maintenance, you're going to pay a heck of a lot more in the out years than you do if you have one. So now I'm going to urge, you know, the city administrator and the department heads, you've got fleet vehicles, I think we need to come up with some sort of a plan to maintain and service them, you know, so that small problems don't become big problems and we don't have the same discussion a few years from now. That's my first point. The second point is, we're looking at 2016 initiatives. We need a new justice center. We need a new police department. It is criminal that these folks are sitting in the building that they're sitting in right now. There are work hazards in the basement. There are, you know, there's leaking problems. There's all sorts of issues over there and I don't think that, you know, our finest, and I truly believe the Gardner police officers are our finest, deserve to be in the conditions that they're in on a daily basis in their work environment. It's, we've got to change that. And if it gives us an opportunity to move the municipal court out of a location which is clearly inadequate. If anybody's come in here on court day, I think you know what I'm talking about.
It's a zoo.
It is madness. And we've got people coming in trying to pay their utility bills or trying to talk to our planners and they're having to go through a room of people that, you know, are waiting to see the judge, waiting to see the attorneys. It's difficult. It's difficult to do business in this building when we have court days. And we kill two birds with one stone there. So I'm going to say, you know, absolutely, I understand, it's not in the budget. We're going to have to bond this. It's a large expenditure, but it's worth it. This is, this comes back to equality of life and, you know, equality of life descends to everything, including economic development. So, you know, we've got to be able to give our law enforcement officers the tools they need to do their job. Now, parks and public works, that's another issue. We want to do something with this building over here. The PWI building, it's a historic landmark in our community and goodness, how many times have we heard people in our community say, man, we could use a community center. We could use a place where we could have theater, you know, presentations that are, that's, you know, indoors and is made for that, you know? Or have events like large weddings or things like that. We don't have a place like that in our community. PWI building could do that for us. So, you know, now we've got to figure out what to do with the public works employees and the equipment that's over there.
You're talking about the Parks and Rec?
The Parks and Rec building. And Parks and Rec and Public Works actually, you know, utilize part of that building. And it frees up that to be a revenue generator. And, you know, we're always talking about, you know, let's take the tax burden off the people in this community and move it to other individuals who have a stake in our community that, you know, like commercial interest. That'd be a perfect opportunity. Westside Park, I understand the need. I cannot understand it being a 2016 initiative. We've got so many high priority items that we could use $700,000 for. That would make more sense than to utilize it for Westside Park. We just talked about public safety. We just talked about, you know, the justice center. That's going to take some money. And when it comes to priorities for me, it's a no-brainer. We've got to take care of our police officers and Westside Park is in need of some rehabilitation. I think nobody here would dispute that. But we can use that $700,000 in 2016 better. That's my opinion.
Just on that, but are there some critical issues like the drainage and some other things that maybe could be addressed that are a piece of that, that we can hold off on a few of the other things?
Yeah, I think that there are some critical issues, concerns. Drainage is certainly, certainly one of them. The building that is currently serving the athletic complex there, concession restroom facility, has some significant concerns, foundation concerns. Really, the size is not appropriate for the activities that are operated out of the park. It's a very heavily, heavily used park and the facilities within them throughout the year. We house league games, practices there nine, 10 months of the year. So it's heavily used and there are some concerns that we'd like to address as soon as possible. Certainly sensitive and understand that there's a lot of needs out there. But we tried to list those, the items that are at the top of the list for that particular park as far as our concerns are, not to completely bulldoze it down and start over, but to try and address some of those major, major items.
And I don't see a problem with addressing those items, but can we do this in 2017 and address the police issues, public safety issues, you know, in 2016? Because I think it comes down to, there's a need, I understand that. Totally agree that these rehabilitation, we need to fix drainage problems. We need to fix the concession stands and restrooms. We probably need to pave the parking as well, but man, police is so important in this area.
Oh, absolutely. Not only that, if you can imagine what they've done with what they've done, imagine what they can do with a little bit more. I guess my question is, is that while we're moving forward, I mean, is this an either/or proposition?
That's kind of what I.
I mean.
I think in, I think.
Well, you asked, can we accommodate, can we accommodate financially the additional?
I'm asking, yeah, between you, Laura?
The additional cars as well as the?
I mean, is this an either/or proposition on whether or not we do Westside and get more police cars?
Or we're not going to six instead of four? If that was, okay.
At least.
At least. It's apparently looking at least.
I'm not sure we're going to be able to put Westside Park in there.
Not with, yeah.
Not with more cars. But any part of that, I guess, is the question. I mean, if Jeff has a list of priorities, I mean, surely adding two more cars is not going to take us $700,000. So my question is, can we parse some of that down and say, here's, maybe Westside Park instead of a one-year project because it's a three-year project?
I would not fall with that.
And we could, we could do that if the council's desire was to head that direction. For example, the overflow parking lot that is currently gravel. We would not necessarily want to, if we're asked to phase it, that wouldn't be the first thing we'd look at. Certainly drainage, you want to take care of all your drainage at the same time if you can. But we could, within the scope of that project, we could identify and break that out into different phases. We've got some thought estimates that have done that. Certainly, you know, drainage of those, of some of the fields and recrowning them would be a top priority. Obviously, it's been an extremely wet, wet spring, probably the wettest spring in the 15 years I've been here and we have, we have just about washed out of all of our tournaments so far this year. Timing is everything and when it rains on the weekends, you don't get those back. Some better drainage would certainly help us capture some of that because when it, when there is a cloud in the air, those tournament directors will look elsewhere and schedule tournaments elsewhere because of that. So yes, to answer your question, we could phase some of that and spread it out. It's a matter if you want to take care of the entire project at once or do it over multiple years.
Yeah, can we reorder and see what it'd be, look like if we did it over two years and then maybe three years?
Over years, yes.
Okay, so that's what would come back in July?
Right, when we bring it back in July, we'll be looking with the input.
What about bonding for the justice center and/or the Parks and Rec and Public Works campus? If we decide to move in that direction, obviously that's not anywhere in the budget and that's a lot of money. That's multiple millions of dollars, probably pushing 20, it looks like according to your initial estimates. And that's before doing the parks study, parks building study, so.
So you spread it over 20 years and you're looking at a million dollars a year?
Yep.
That's a whole lot of money.
It is.
And that's fine, but you're, remember your bonded interest fund hasn't got a lot of money already. a lot of money already.
We use the increased valuation to make up the difference.
So, that's, again, we don't know what that's going to be. That's a, that's an unknown.
What's an unknown?
Well, we know what this year's increased valuations were, but in the future, we don't know what it's going to be. So, we don't know whether this bond's going to involve a mill levy increase or not.
I don't think that the valuation isn't the problem. The problem is the payment.
The valuation. Exactly.
I would, honestly, you're looking at an increase. If you start adding in that kind of money?
Yeah.
That's what you're looking at.
And we haven't even started talking about infrastructure on the other side of I-35.
Right. That is correct. You haven't started talking about presentation number two, which?
Yeah, I know.
Might shape some of your thoughts.
Right. And then, yeah.
I'm just trying to, you know, trying to get a sense of this. There's some big expensive projects coming, guys.
Sure. Yeah, sure.
Some of this has been because of neglect of twenty years, like, for example, the police department, you know, public, you know, safety center, you know? And some of it's because of economic development opportunities that we all want to see. I think we all want to see more commercial businesses coming to this community. And, you know, we've got infill plans and things are already starting to fill in, but we've got a whole lot of acres on the other side of I-35 that's just screaming for development.
Yeah. Chris?
Well, I just, I have two questions. One, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar infrastructure study, is that focused primarily on new infrastructure needs, so I-35, that type? Or is it a combination of new plus our existing infrastructure and what we need to do?
Both. It will look at the entire, it'll look across the entire city to see what we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure for the build-out of the comp plan.
Okay.
And some of that will include some design work, Brian. I think you talked about, if we spend that, we'll have some design plan so that we won't have to spend as much on the back end, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My second question is, talking about bonds, specifically for something like the police station, is that a decision that we have to build into the two thousand sixteen budget? Or is that something that, much like the school bond, that you can handle outside of it and say, okay, we're going to take this out for a vote and then we'll, I mean, so, I guess, my question is, how much of that discussion in detail do we have to have for two thousand sixteen? Because it's pretty obvious we're probably not going to fund it within our existing parameters. Or is that something that can happen outside of the context of this budget discussion?
Then I want to touch on something. Okay, well, any of these things that we're talking about, two thousand sixteen, if you built it, we'd have to issue debt today to make a payment due in two thousand sixteen. So, that's, these are initiatives to get things going in two thousand sixteen. Those debt ones on that second slide, those are just things that are still out there hanging and we didn't have firm direction. Are they in or are they out? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Because that sets the planning table. No debt payments, you'd have to be selling debt today for something that you've pretty much already built.
Yeah, but I'm saying, okay, so when you say, are they in or are they out? I mean, I think there's a consensus, for the most part, that, okay, we want to pursue this police station, right?
Right.
But what I'm saying is, what does that mean to the two thousand sixteen budget? Nothing, right? It's just, that's more of a planning tool. It's not?
Planning tool.
Okay, all right.
Now, the West Side Park one, that one was a little more current because we could put that in when Jeff would want to start that right away, when the ball season stopped this year. So, that one kind of mattered now. And you, I think I heard, not so much on West Side, we would phase it. But, you know, the Public Works Parks facility, the question was, are you in for the study? Which means you're at least mostly in for the project.
I'm, I'm, I want the study. I want to know what, how much it's going to cost to get us into your building.
Okay.
Sure, you were leaning in.
Yes, I wanted, wanted to just touch base on something that Councilman Harrison is asking is, what does it mean if you decide you want it in? Remember, the number we have for the law enforcement facility does not include land. Here's what it means. What it means is, we start to look at land. Because even if you bond a facility, that's a building. We need to be dealing with, where does that building go? So, what it would mean is, let's start to talk about what we're going to do in terms of location and land acquisition.
Well, I could echo what everybody else said.